All right, let's call meeting order at 7:00 PM. Welcome one and all to the first convocation of the planning commission for 2020. Still being used to say it. Let's see, the first item after calling the order is public comment. And so this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on any agenda matter not on tonight's agenda that was within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. And I apologize if I did that point in the wrong way. So is there anyone who'd like to talk about something other than what's on tonight's Oh, and I think this is a first. Well, then, thank you. For that, we will close public comment and continue with the regular calendar. The first item on the agenda is the rotation of the chair and vice chair for 2020. There's a predetermined order in which the chairmanship is assigned on the planning commission and, as it turns out, the board supervising. And this is the meeting of the year when we make that change. So I would like to welcome Mr. Chair Fraser to the chair as the incoming chairman, and he will take over at this point around the rest of the meeting. So Chairman Fraser.
Okay. Good question. That should be Diana. Item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of minutes from November 14th, 2019.
I have one change. Page three, second line, second word from the end, pretty extreme environmental, it should be required.
No.
Okay. Does that change all the commotion to minutes of the day?
I will second.
Motion and second, all in favor. Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to agenda item number three, tentative parcel map P-18-21, an application requesting to divide an approximate 13-acre parcel into two resulting parcels of approximately five and eight acres for residential use. The project site is 541 Browns Ranch Road, Weaverville, APN number 024-410-02. Dorfing House, staff.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I will ask the ox time to recede myself from this agenda item.
Thank you. Staff.
Yes, as a continued item of the November meeting, a question was raised about condition number 12 regarding culverts, conditioning the culvert for certain impacts from the resulting parcel of the subdivision map. So unless needed, was the background of the map, and if we could, unless there's any questions, just go into discussion about the conditions. Also, a correspondence was received from the applicant's representative regarding the desire to also remove conditions number 13, and 11 and 13, in addition to either modifying or removing condition number 12. Did you receive that letter?
Yeah.
Okay, you reviewed it. Okay, we do have Department of Transportation staff present, and I believe the applicant, proponent of the project, has prepared some maps and some comments regarding the project and request.
Okay, so I guess before we open to public comment, we could, we'll open it up to the applicant and to DOT, hear from them, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Good evening, Chairman. I'm Tom Dorfinghouse, I'm the applicant, and my representative for Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers has an opening to take and they'd like to make, just to get these to one that actually prepare and submit the documentation you have in front of you.
Eric. Good evening, my name's Eric, I work with Trinity Valley Engineers. We're here today to represent Tom and Patty Dorfinghouse. We'd like to work together to resolve these issues that we have. We feel obligated to do this for Tom. In your staff report, we agreed to, you'll see the memo that we wrote, we agreed to all 17 conditions except 10, 11, 12, and 13, either all or portions of them. If you have any questions about that memo, you can ask me at the end. Our intent is not to override the subdivision map act or county ordinance. With every project, there's limitations, physical constraints, financial burdens in developing properties. It's our duty to ensure the balance is struck to meet these challenges. DCE strives to serve all our clients in a timely manner. I'd like to point out that this application for the project was submitted back in 2018. It took more than 12 months to receive the conditions of approval on the project. And we feel this delay has added strain to the client and the project. And we'd also like to point out that historically, a subdivision review committee would have eased this process, but in its absence, we find ourselves nearly 18 months into the process. We'd also like to take this time to bring to light a very important observation. We've noticed a steady decline in recorded surveys, maps in the past decade. The decline has reached the lowest possible point with zero maps being recorded last year and only one in 2018. Prior to that, maps were being recorded on a frequent basis. So pretty much all subdivisions have ceased in this county. I'd like to take this time to thank you for your considerations, and let me know if you have any questions on that memo we received.
Any questions for the public? Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to hand the relation of a larger scale of now just a stipulation for the element of the work that we're working on. You have smaller problems here, but it might be easier to look at those as well, as we're doing in current partners.
Thank you.
Now, what's the condition of the 10, what do these merit? Condition number 10 is where the Department of Transportation is asked to adjudication property along the existing subject property that we're dealing with here. Now, with the neighborhood property in the house, so that they could have the additional roof that they need to take from the existing 50-foot wide, it's a degree, easement, that exists now, to a 60-foot wide, so that they can correct the meandering of the existing paved road within that easement. Now, they're currently service open, large, it's many lines, except that they're in this, within the driveway. And they apparently are dissatisfied with the thing that is not acceptable, to have road meander within the right way, instead of being right in the center of the existing right way. So they're saying that if they were ever able to appropriate the funds, remove the roof, center it within the easement, that they need an additional 10 feet of road width to do so. But they only want it off the road. It involves numerous parcels over here, including Mr. Matthews, several other residents, in order for this to be accomplished. I see no purpose in it, I see that it's just a unnecessary requirement that we probably never have funds appropriated for, and probably never have. It works fine the way it is, there's no further development, it's a dead-end road, there's nothing needed for the traffic owner. So therefore, our position on condition number 10 is that at the end. They're actually saying that they can not require easement on any neighbor property, so it's a partial landmark, doesn't do anything whatsoever, unless they go a lot further with, by doing a number or many on the neighbor property or neighborhood complex, because they say they won't have to. Okay. On to condition number 11, they're asking for us to redo this map, to show where we would like to have on the map a deed or actually encroachment, whereas where we would replace the driveway, give the property as a piece of development plan to put in. The reasoning behind they want on this is that they say they have numerous people in the county that put in illegal encroachments without permits and such, so they want, they don't like writing technical citations, so therefore they don't have to have the correct citation. They think that my putting some crosshatches on this map is going to prevent it from producing. My position is that if a woman's property is ever developed, and they want to put home on it, they're going to have to apply towards here and there, so it has to be approved by the county, that's the kind of deal. Doing it now, it could be cheap, and people might want to put a driveway down here and have longer roads to their home. I'm not sure where I would put it, but my opinion doesn't matter, I might not be the one developing a property. Number 12, this is a pretty contentious issue. They're asking me to spend $4,000 or $5,000 for an engineer to do a hundred-year flood study, to determine if the 30-inch culvert right here, where little brown country, is of sufficient size to handle a hundred-year flood and/or any additional water drainage off of anything that comes down here. We have over 300 acres back up here, 100, 275 acres would be state land that brings right down this section. There are numerous parcels all the way through here, including two there as vacant residential parcel, one 14 acre, one 15 acre, that are possibly going to be developed. If this parcel was to have a net zero drainage to it, that these two parcels up there also have, have a net zero drainage. And that's the verse, that this culvert is insufficient enough to handle one more drop of water, this way for them. So therefore, the wording that we've worked back and forth with the Department of Transportation to try to get them to remove is, and we're lucky to do so, they want to keep it in the wording of their condition, is that if there is anything other than a net zero application to the home of the property, that it's possible whoever's doing this property development would have to put in a culvert. I called post-construction, asked the research department if they could give me an idea of what it would cost to replace this 30-inch culvert with a 48-inch culvert. They said without any plans drawn, they can only give me just a thumbnail sketch. It would between $100,000 to $150,000 to replace 30-inch culvert with a 48-inch culvert. And that's not even, if that's only in the existing conditions that the 30-inch culvert is. If they have to do it according to state standards, and they state new construction within the 50-foot easement that exists, it could go up to $200,000, what the rule of property is to replace the culvert, because you've got to put in the concrete floor, you've got to put in the stainless steel railings and stuff that people can fall off this culvert and then they'll get yourself. So the standards to do it so would be extremely expensive for everybody. So that's why we want to get the potential of that being a landlord's approval by landlord's condition of, for replacement, that's why we want that, wants replacement removed out of that condition. The potential litigation says they called for, for doing this, is another open can of worms, simply because all the surrounding counties have adopted a, what we call a low impact self-inspinage. Trinity County has not, so I don't understand. So whatever litigation you come up with, is that the pure determination of whoever is in charge at Department of Transportation, or whether it's an acceptable litigation or not, if they determine it not an acceptable litigation, what they have written in the provisions is that then it should be upwards graphed as to who had to pay for it, the different cost. That's the kind of thing I'm trying to get away from that. The cost of it just way before the, then we go on to condition number 13, which is last of the steer of Shasta Springs Road, that they're asking for us to dedicate a portion of property along the subject property of just this one side, so that in the virtuality that they ever want to develop property on the upper end on the north side of this, there are only two parcels that have already have a road right away on this easement. It's currently a private easement all the way through, it affects four existing parcels and possibly two more, so six parcels have the right to use this road. And if I dedicate a portion of mine, and they're saying that I do not need, they don't need a dedication for these other people, but they want to have me dedicate this, and what that does by dedicating it, even if they do not accept the dedication from me, by my dedication, my disbursement of it, it allows it to become a public road, which is going to break the impact, all of my neighbors, and all of them are going to be involved in this one public road. So I think it's, there again, a ridiculous requirement on just being able to split into two parcels within the current standards of the area by acre mountains, that's all I'm asking to do, is split into two parcels. So I think that Gerald has similar teachings to bring up regarding the properties back here, and the wording in condition 13 was either the ease of future development of the 275 acres that is now state land, that they would need to be able to put a public road of Shasta Springs to be able to develop. The likelihood from less than 100-year flood. Gerald?
Thank you. Department of Transportation, would you like to speak?
These are contemporary conditions, they're in the code, so a lot of them, we don't have discretionary decision making over. It says to ward a 60-foot, or to secure a 60-foot right-of-way for roadways, so when it says it in the code, that's what we have to follow. As far as assessing the 100-year flood plane, that's required on a lot of properties to identify, so you don't build in the 100-year flood plane. And then also, keeping your flow on the property, the new flow, taking that back to pre-project equals post-project, that is a very contemporary thing that's done quite often to minimize the downstream stuff that you have to do, but if the owner did not want to do that, the option is going in and replacing the culvert. So it's kind of either or. But all these things are very typical things that you'll see on subdivisions open to the state and not on those conditions. You know, where he's at, where he mentions securing right-of-way, one of the things, the easiest way we get right-of-way for new roads is requiring it as projects develop. And yes, you end up with the checkerboard, but eventually, over time, you have enough people that do things on the property that allows you to get all the right-of-way that you're supposed to have, as spelled out in the code. So I can answer any question.
So you're saying the code has changed, so that the width of the right-of-way, there's an existing 50-foot right-of-way along Brown Springs Road, and you're saying the code has changed at some point, and now requires 60-foot right-of-ways for any road?
That's why it's listed, 60 feet.
And that's the minimum? This is a one and a half lane road, it's like 12 feet wide. You know, it doesn't mean...
If you ask me, I would have different right-of-way widths, but I have width established
And your statement earlier about taking the easement, was that talking about the Shasta Springs side, where you wanted to include that easement of what is currently a private road, and add that to, so in the future, you could have your, is that what you're talking about, when you're talking about a checkerboard?
One of the things, when we have potential for development, we are supposed to secure access to those loaded areas, so that they can develop in the appropriate circulation. Particularly, if you look at laws and the way the laws have been changed over the last couple of years, when you go to develop, you are supposed to minimize the amount of vehicles that are traveled by any individual on parcels and property. So there might be a lot of times where they think, oh, we'll just do this area, and then have people drive up and around and back in to go to that area. Well, they're not allowing that anymore, it's becoming a significant issue in some of these projects. So you have to minimize the amount of travel that you have for this project, and you have to be thinking about what you're going to be doing in projects in the future, because you can lock yourself out of being able to do things later on, depending on how the property, the project is set up.
What's the rationale for having the encroachment marked even before the property is sold?
We've had a, over time, we've had a problem with encroachments being placed. People in Trinity have a tendency to build it in a natural permission, and so what the intent is, is to have the encroachment marked on the plan, so that we know it's going to work, and the property owner knows it's going to work. All it is, is just essentially, they're marking where it is. The new homeowner comes in, he wants it somewhere else, there's nothing that precludes him from coming and questioning it somewhere else. This is just something that establishes that we've agreed upon, provide that access to this property. One of the things that you do through this, is you try to identify any problems that might come forth. There are properties here, that are front roads, that you actually have to drive through, your neighbor's property, you get to. And so that's, we identify the encroachments to make sure that the property's accessible, or if something else needs to be done, it's taken care of beforehand.
I can add to that comment as well. A site visit occurred in October with our staff in the planning department, and our consultants, Ms. Agent Gary Reese. At that time, we did notice there were, there's a lot of topography on the portion of parcel right where the road works. There's a lot of topography in that area, and it drew several ranges. So this is something the planning department, our staff encouraged as well, just to delineate where the proposed driveway would be because of the topographical divisions and the drainage situation.
Again, it's meant to show, it's a starting point. It's meant to say, yes, we have access, we can get onto that property. New person comes with some other idea, alls you need to do is come in and ask.
So you're not locked into it?
No.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, I have a question about the code change that says it's a 60-foot. What code changed?
I was just referring, maybe it changed from the date that they did the 50-foot to today's 60-foot code. I don't know when that was enacted, it's enacted at least 10-plus years ago.
But the burden is on a sub-developer now for an existing county road to dedicate additional property to the county because some code changed?
Yes, anytime you go through the entitlement process, there's extractions to getting things that the community calls for through the general plan and through the code. And so when he proposes this project, those are the things that we look at and condition if it calls for it.
So what if this condition were not here? What would be the effect of the code saying it should be here and it's not here?
It's going against code, it's not, it'd not be consistent with county code.
County code?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's different than the subdivision map acts are taking?
The state streets and highways code calls for 40 feet. I have worked with 50 feet quite a bit, but our county, because of the terrain, has determined a while back that 50 feet is appropriate, or 60, I'm sorry.
Any other questions, questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. With that, we will open to public comment on this item.
There are courses at Weaverville.
Could you hold up just a second till we get these maps?
As long as you don't start my time. So basically, I have a little bit of an interest in this project, because I am the agent representing of the two parcels that they talked about briefly, beyond the Shasta Springs Road as described on these maps. There's two parcels there, where two sisters own the parcel, and they quit claiming them by gift deed, and they're required now to get a certificate of compliance to make those gift deed valid. So that's the project that we're talking about there. On a little bit of an editorial perspective, just watching the process that's happening here, it's like, and Eric mentioned a little bit, most of what's being talked about in this meeting should have been done in a subdivision review committee meeting. That's the time when you get a chance to talk about conditions and what you can do about them and how they match the situation. If you look at this project, 18-21 means it probably was the application went in in June of 2018, so that's 18 months ago. And from my understanding, the landowner didn't get knowledge of these conditions until sometime in October. And so we went for over a year without knowing that these kind of conditions might be put on this property, and clearly, in my mind, $100,000 in excess for a culvert would be more than the land might be worth by itself, and so that's a big problem. But that should have been dealt with, the subdivision review committee, and I really think you should take it in terms of making sure that subdivision committee gets back on its feet and gets utilized for these kinds of things, because that's the place where this kind of decision to happen, not where somebody's got three minutes to talk about it or something else. And Eric mentioned there's no maps, I actually told him that number, but I had done more research, so it was actually one parcel map and one record survey done in 2019. The recorder's office has changed their indexing of those kinds of things a little bit, so I didn't find them initially, but there was one of each of those reported in 2019. And the surveyors around town that I talked to are not taking new parcel map projects because they can't get them through, they can't get them done, and so they're simply saying, I don't want to do that kind of project, it's going to be held up for multiple years. In Andy Spence's response to the letter from the surveyor, he mentioned that they had asked for a dedication of 50-foot along Shasta Springs Road for that two parcel project that I'm talking about, but I had spoke to the director after that, and asked him if it wasn't reasonable to talk about maybe dedicating a trail. The, I'm not going to leave copy for this. The Shasta Springs, the Weaville Basin Trail System calls for a Shasta Springs trail. Right now, it runs from Mustard Hill to Shasta Springs, it calls for an extension of this road to Shasta Spring as a trail, and then that trail would also go down to the industrial park. So I think you should be aware of the fact that the trail system is actually looking for that. Just real quick, I think if you have a dedication, all of the record owners of the land that are impacted by that road dedication should be needing to sign the certificate, not just the landowner. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Justin Hawkins from A-Corps. A couple of things about the memorandum. I noticed, looking at it with respect to condition 12, it does say in here that they're recommending a replacement perhaps of these culverts. And the thing with these culverts is that they're actually a water course that's draining from way upstream, hundreds of acres up above. So hundreds of acres in this climate is going to need more than a 30-inch culvert. And I went and took a look at the site and it got overtopped probably last year. You can tell they wrap around the ends of the culvert, probably the county, the county maintained road. I doubt they got an LSA for that activity. It's definitely in a water course.
RCP did it.
Well, somebody did it. I don't know if they got an LSA, but if they got an LSA, then they would have done a hydrology report to that culvert work there, possibly. So there's, the study may have already been done, but it does say in the condition, the developer should not be required to mitigate for pre-existing conditions, the last sentence of, of the first paragraph for number 12, or impacts from other upstream properties. Culvert's already been overtopped. In fact, they've cut a culvert, they cut the top of the culvert on the inlet side open so it would allow more flow in without having to have a, an overtop going down into the culvert. So they've already been working on the spot. I think it's a known issue. And to have the developer replace this doesn't make any sense. And also, when you go to get an LSA and official wildlife inspector property, if you have a culvert on your property that's not your right-of-way, okay, the county maintained road, you don't have to get an LSA to replace that. That's the county's issue, the owner of the road. So if this is a county road, then why would he have to be replacing any culverts at all, especially when most of the impacts are from way upstream? It's negligible amount of area we're talking about. Like, let's say he paved his driveway, we're talking a fraction of an acre. So we're talking, I mean, less than, I don't even know, less than 1% of the whole area. I mean, we're talking about no impervious surface compared to the whole drainage out there. So I think that we should just allow the developer to go ahead and have his parcels. And if the county needs to upgrade those culverts, that's their responsibility.
Anyone else who wants to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any discussions, motions? Comments, questions?
Well, I find the applicant's logic and position on these conditions more compelling than I find the OT's.
I agree.
But I also should bring up, I think there is a, there is a line in condition six that talks about putting the hundred-year flood on the map, but the last line of that condition says the flood study shall also evaluate the capacity of culvert. So if you take action that doesn't include 12, then you probably would need to strike that aside.
Any other comments from the commission? Suggestions?
Well, I'll make a motion to.
The resolution number is 2021.
And are we recommending this to the board or is this, is this a final action under planning condition?
Final action of the planning commissioner, listen, appeal.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-01 and the conditions of approval minus conditions 10 through 13 and the last sentence of condition 6.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
All seconds.
Okay, motion and a second. And does this need to be roll call vote or?
Yes.
There may be some discussion.
And do we have any further discussion? Competing motions? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And who's going to call out our rule?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
I may ask a question regarding the subdivision committee. We asked at some, a few months ago, I remember a conversation about the fact that there had not been a subdivision committee meeting and what the status was of subdivision requests. And basically, as I recall, we're told there was not really any need for one, at least at that time. And so this is something that I absolutely agree should have gone before the subdivision committee. Are there others like this that are just being kept up in the planning department that we need to start having subdivision committee meetings again?
Okay, another question there. Yes, we need to re-convene the subdivision committee. We have a backlog of subdivision projects, parcel maps, at least one Ted of subdivision map that are backed up. There hasn't been staff to process these projects is part of the issue. However, regardless of the staffing issues, the subdivision committee is very much needed to, as the applicant and Mr. Porvland and Mr. Keys noted, that many of these issues could have been discussed and negotiated and the project could have moved forward with a much clearer understanding of what would be the conditions versus getting to this point and the applicant giving the conditions shortly in advance of the meeting. In fact, some couple of conditions were handed to him at the meeting. Unfortunately, in November, those were not on the list today that were struck. But definitely the need for subdivision committee. Now, as planning director, I do have a concern with the current organization of the subdivision committee. And that is, my question being is having a planning commissioner on that, on that committee is at a conflict later on when that map comes before the commission and, and that planning commissioner has been involved in that project. So that's something that's been on my mind. Regardless though, whether it's commissioner on it or how it's organized, we need to have this. It is very critical. Planings been neglected. It's essential. I absolutely agree with that.
Okay, I believe that would be a question to ask county councilor, whether that would be a conflict or not. That's, I don't think I've ever seen us use the subdivision review committee. Well, I've been on the board as long or longer than anybody here, so, and that's how it was set up. I know when I first was on the commission, I was the chairman of the subdivision review committee, but I didn't know what it was, so.
I actually sat, I attended, I was part of one, one in seven years.
And I have discussed this matter with the county council, Margaret Long, and I'll revisit that with her and, and report back the next time commission meeting discussion moving forward with the reconvening of subdivision committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it seems like that same issue would apply to the architectural review committees. So if there are, if we are in any committees, which two of us are, that meet on items brought before the commission, and if that's an issue, we probably need to restructure it.
Would be a good thing to know. Okay, moving on to item number four, conditional use permit P-19-18, an application requesting that 2,400 square foot single family dwelling in a 660 square foot shop be conditionally approved in the TPZ zoning district. Project site is loaded, located at 10410 Forest Service Road, 4N09 Higham Palm, APN Applicant Henskey, proposed sequer determination exempt. No.
Thank you, commissioners. This request is for a conditional use permit, as you said, to allow a single-family dwelling with an accessory structure on a parcel zone, timberland production zone in Higham Palm. The applicant's consultant of Down River Consulting is here tonight to answer any site-specific questions we might have. The subsequent memo was provided to you that includes the Forest Services comments and a revised resolution and conditions of approval that incorporates those comments. The consultant has been updated on those requirements and staff recommends full approval. And do you have any questions?
Any questions of staff? Doesn't look like it. Okay. With that, we will open this item up to begin with to the consultant and then we'll hear from the general public.
Good evening, my name is Deidre Brower. I'm with Down River Consulting and we've been working with applicant Miss Henskey to help her get approval to develop a dwelling and shop on this building, on this parcel. She has plans for a separate system and a home in process. She purchased the house or the property in 2011 and there's no dwelling or anything on it. She would like to have one. I did have one question on condition, or not condition, I'm sorry. Just as the attachment one resolution number two B makes the following findings, and that last section of B says, "As conditioned, this conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare," and then, "Or if it results in the creation of a public nuisance." So I wasn't sure about that last section. You know, I may just not understand what it means exactly or I'm not sure if it needs to be there.
I think that was just a clerical error. You can take out that.
I just found that and I just wasn't sure about it.
Thank you for finding that.
I think it's fairly straightforward. If you have any questions, please let us know and we'll bring you up for more information on the, on the condition.
Does anyone have any questions for the consultant? Right off the bat. I do have one question. I don't know if you would have the ability, but do you have a more detailed map or a map that can be read?
I do have another map.
The, the, the map I have is pretty grainy. You can't really see anything on it. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I guess with that, we can open it up to public comment. And is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, discussion?
Well, I'll make a comment, if you may, if I may. I think with the additional input from the Forest Service addressing open issue, I think the project makes sense.
I was actually kind of hoping we would have a CAL FIRE representative here tonight to discuss their condition because it, CAL FIRE says they're required to meet fire safe code. And I was wondering if that would include fire-rated road all the way to their residence when they're going to be traveling over miles and miles of federal roads? How, how could we require them to upgrade the forest roads to meet CAL FIRE standards?
No, they would just be focusing on their driveway.
From their driveway in, okay. Any other questions for staff? Just the forest service.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the attached resolution 2020-02 for conditional use permit. Henskey, P-19-18, subject to the findings and conditions of approval as stated in resolution 2020-02, that was included with the subsequent memorandum dated January 8 of 2020.
Have a motion?
Do you need to strike that? Is that a clerical error?
Yes, I'd like so.
Would you like to?
To, to be, there needs to be a period of, of, or.
Oh, okay, yes. With the amendment that, to, item two, two B, that as conditioned, this conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. One, two. This conditional use permit, does this need to be a roll call vote also or is this just a voice vote? It's a resolution, so if, I would think it should be in roll, roll call vote.
Yes, that's your rule call. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item number five, annual initial variance from required 350-foot commercial cannabis setback, CCB-19-60, an application requesting a variance from the required 350-foot cannabis cultivation setback from neighboring residential dwelling, TCC 17.43.050.8.8. Project site is located at 171 Bear Springs Road, Joneson City, APN number 009-490-15. Applicant Kotssevka. Kotsseva, okay.
Thank you. As you stated, this is a request for an initial annual commercial cannabis setback variance from three neighboring residential dwellings on Bear Springs Road in Junction City. The applicant Amelia Kotsiva and her consultant Mitch Ivanoff are here tonight. If you have any questions for them. Additionally, Kristi Anderson from Environmental Health is here to answer any comments relating to her, or any questions relating to her comment. And then, I stated on page three of the staff report, due to a concerned neighbor's comment and a concerned agency comment from Environmental Health Division, staff was unable to fully meet required finding number three, and thus has to recommend denial of the variance. I would like to mention that while we did receive supportive neighbor comment letters, it is not appropriate for staff to determine which neighbor's complaints are valid and which are not. It is my task to present commissioners with all comments, and it's the responsibility of the commission to deny or approve. Additionally, per Planning Commission precedent and Trisign County Code, I am unable to fully meet one of their part in findings, and I have to recommend denial, as I previously stated. We did engage in preliminary conversation with the applicant prior to application submitted, and expressed our concerns with the high volume of residences and previous variance denials in the area. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, staff? Okay. Thank you. All right. Before we open it up to the general public, I would give the applicant and/or her consultant an opportunity to come forward first.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Mitch, I'm independent consultant of Lewiston. I will speak for Amelia because she doesn't speak very well English. I would like to mention to you that today, she spoke with the concerned neighbors, and maybe there is a change of opinion in supporting the, these variants. And I also spoke with the planning department, and they suggested, I mean, if there is support from the concerned neighbor, planning would suggest approval of this variance. And approval of this variance is the last item applicant needs in order to obtain their cannabis cultivation license. They have already built residence fifty percent, the residence fifty percent completed, and they fully comply with all environmental county and state regulations. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for the consultant?
When you say there may have been a change in.
Yes.
From the neighbor, you're saying they're reconsidering their, their concern comment?
Concerned neighbor is here tonight, and we will hear what they have to say, so, but I would like to consider this, because it's very important, and it would cause to change in planning department's opinion whether to approve or to deny this.
Do you have any comments on the agency comment regarding the water issues that Environmental Health Department is looking at?
Uh, no.
Any other questions for the consultant? Is this, is this an existing cultivation site that's being brought into compliance?
Uh, it's brand new.
Brand new, okay. Sorry. Thank you. All right, with that, we will open to the general public. Anybody wishing to speak on this intended item can approach the podium and comment.
Good evening, I'm Jack Agelston, I'm the, one of the owners that didn't comment that is in the three hundred fifty foot area there. And I wanted to get my voice in here. I am a thirty year public service career, and I retired in this area after visiting near family for many years, and we, a lot of our vacations were camping in that, so we love the, this kind of area where we live. We moved here, we love the pines, we love the spells. We love being able to keep our windows open at night. We no longer can do that for about a third of the year because of the aroma of marijuana from the several grows that are in, already close to us. We're, during that season, I've also developed allergies. I've never had allergies before, but with this heavy marijuana smell, I've got allergies in the fall now. Also, we're concerned about having our grandchildren playing at such close proximity to this grow because it would be close to our property line, and that area is a big play area for our grandkids when they come to visit us. Another concern we have is the drop in property values. If we have a grow so close to our property, we already know people are trying to sell property and having to drop the prices over and over. They're not able to buy, get, find buyers at this point. I don't know for certain if it's marijuana, but they seem to think it is. And another area of concern is the criminal element. We read the papers and hear about during the harvest season thereafter, people have drunk drink to, as much as murders in some of the surrounding areas over there. They're trying to take possession of somebody else's property. And I don't want my property to be mistaken for the one that's right next door. The last, main thing I'm concerned about is if there's a variance given, is if there's follow-up, and I know it's supposed to be an annual, but there was a grow right next to us before, that was way down by the river. We, they gave a variance for a three or six months for them to hook up a fifth wheel on the property. That was over five years ago, still sitting there, nobody's doing anything about it. They've also now moved in a, a motorhome, nobody lives there. There's two vehicles that are just ugly out in our site. They moved in a school bus at the end of their grow, it burned down in the Helena Fire. And we were told that if we didn't clean up our properties, county would come in and do it with paint. That school bus is still sitting in the floodway down there. Sure, it's not, not a good thing at all. And I'm concerned about something where if I want to complain about marijuana growing in the future, I'm going to have to pay to do it, which, I don't understand that either. So if we allow something to go in, and I'm looking at future problems too.
Thank you.
Could you clarify which parcel you, you are?
I'm, I'm parcel, can I call the pointer to you?
Well, are you off of Red Hill Road?
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen, the one that didn't provide a comment.
Hi, my name is Sherri Montiel, and I have parcel number zero zero nine five one zero thirteen. And if you look on this, this map here, my house is not in the zone, but my, the back of my property line runs almost the whole length of his west property line. And if you look where the hoop house would be positioned, that's right directly where, in line with my well. And there's just not enough distance between the hoop house and my well for me to feel comfortable with my water quality, how much water they'll be taking from me, if it's going to be polluted. I don't know, you know, if there's guarantees on that, but I do have a genuine concern about my water because of my well being so close to the hoop house. And, and like Jack, my property values too, I feel will go down with, you know, if you look out on my back porch and you see a big hoop house out. I don't have anything against growing marijuana. I moved up here to see the woods. I didn't move up here to be in a farm area. And that's just my opinion, Ed, but, you know, I am concerned about my, my water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Betty Williams, and I have a little survey here that you can see probably better. Then, this is their property, this is my property, and this is Jack's property, right here. So, if you can see that? How close, everything is? And we have had, I don't know if it's a gas smell or a soft smell, something new in our water. The, it happened about two months ago. Yeah, I, I had a new water heater, but it's, it's still there, so I'm going to have to, right there, right here. And, so I don't know what's going on there, but, you know, we have that place on the corner. And we're downhill, so it could be that it's coming down. So now we have another problem. We've consulted some people, I have an iron filter, but now with, we're going to have to get a smell filter and an iron filter, and it's going to cost us five thousand dollars for a whole new system now. And they guarantee that that will take away the smell, but I'm not sure that it will. I'm against marijuana, it makes me sick, and like Jack, we can't open our windows five months out of the air because it smells like skunk. And so I'm just, this here is, is right across from my house. My house is sixty feet from their facility. We, my house is thirty feet from the, the road, and then the road is thirty feet, and then their property. So. I talked to her today, she, I said, I told her I didn't like it, my son said he didn't care, and so I said, well, put it over there somewhere, you know? Anyway, that's my opinion. I'm Sharon Agelston, Jack's other half, not his better half, but his other half. We've been in our home for twenty years, ever since we got burned out with the BLM controlled burn, you might recall, in Lewiston. And we love where we live. I particularly love absolute dark at night. I'm not looking forward to having a tinted thing that's lit all year, all night. Being here twenty years, we were like before the grows started. And so we were against that, but, you know, as decisions were made by the county, we kind of swallowed it, thinking, okay, well, at least it's going to be far from us, we won't have that encroaching on our happy little life. It never occurred to me that there could be a variance issue popping up that would bring it back into our lives so close, just so close. We really would hope that you would deny this. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Justin Hawkins, just a couple things on the nitrogen issue and the water contamination possibly. The obvious solution that they do in a lot of places, the concrete floor in the greenhouse that goes to a holding tank, and that's common for indoor cultivation too, is required, not allowed to discharge waste, water waste to a separate system. So they would have, this is an easy system, it's not a big deal, it's pretty common. So they could put a slab, put a drain, and then have that pump take into somewhere, or usually what you do is you let the water evaporate off, and you're left with whatever residual is there, and that can be disposed of at Hazardous Waste Facility. And also inside the cannabis general order from the water board, isn't nitrogen management plan that is probably not required for this site because of the size, but, you know, that could be something the county could consider as a mitigation? So both those two things probably would contain nitrogen and contamination at that site, or potential contamination. So I wanted to just mention real quick on page four of the staff report. Item number, well, it's, it's, it's on number four, beginning of the fourth page. The second paragraph down starts with the general purpose of the zoning code. The second sentence from that paragraph reads, "The proposed project is substantially in compliance with the zoning code provisions for commercial cannabis cultivation, which the county has found are necessary to reduce the potential impacts associated with unregulated cannabis cultivation." To me, this sounds like the idea we've talked about before, where licensing is a mitigation for unregulated cannabis in this county. And there's been pushback on that idea for, that licensing's not the mitigation. When, you know, back in twenty sixteen and even fifteen, the idea is, we're in an unregulated situation, we need to bring everyone into compliance through some measure, carrot or stick. This right here says basically that licensing is a mitigation to our problems in this county. I just thought that this was relevant to the broader picture of the program in the county and where the program stands.
Thank you.
I just want to make one more comment, because what Sharon said about the light, I, I didn't even think about that, but my bedroom faces right where that is, which means, and I have big sliding doors because I like to look out at night. I will have that light coming into my bedroom every night. And, you know, like Sharon, I moved up here to look at the stars and the trees, and, you know, that's about all I could say about that. I didn't move up here for that.
You know, I, I don't care how you cut it, licensed or not. Cooper's Bar Estates is one of the, one of the finer, was one of the finer rural residential neighborhoods in our community, in our county. And the fact that these grows have come in and popped up, I can understand why people don't want to live there. And I've seen a lot of people, like the Agelstons, that moved up here, bought a home, and have left. And like the Agelstons, they were contributors and, to our community, volunteer efforts in a lot of different areas, and now they're gone for pop. And, you know, that's all I got to say about that.
Hi, Veronica Kelly Aldis, Douglas City. And the comment I want to make is about the word mitigation. It's such a pretty word, and it looks really good on paper. And that's really about the weight it has in some cases. We have experienced throughout the county, you guys really trying to, to work for us and do things for us, and you put it on paper, but there's no bite to the enforcement. They have to give twenty-four hours notice before they can show up for an inspection, and I can clean my house in twenty-four hours. And so, something to keep in mind when we're making these, when these decisions come before you in any capacity is, what is the public benefit? What is the whole public benefit? Not, you know, these, the applicant as well, both sides. And we all need a place to live, industry and non-industry. Finding that balance is proving tricky. But when a variance is put in place to help create that balance, and there is problems with it, then it's something that should be taken a look at. You can mitigate almost anything in this world on paper, but will it realistically get done? If it's not done, we have to pay now for complaints I'm hearing, I'm going to research that one. How does that protect the public? How does that protect public welfare, health, and safety? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been complaining about this burnout bus, we want to order. I ordered, if that's what I'm.
We need to have people one time to the podium, please. I, I know I let one order to get away with it, I should have never done it. You, you get your three minutes one time. Thank you.
Two years.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Steve Roadhouse.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Steve Roadhouse. And as I listen to all these different aspects of, there's two trains of thought I keep seeing, and one of them is to have cannabis, whatever kind of operation is, spread throughout the county, kind of in a checkerboard pattern. Perhaps you can remember when the Forest Service owned every other section, and SP owned every other section of land in Trinity County, and what conundrum that became, and even how the Forest Service has tried to consolidate and move their lands together so it was more manageable. The other relates to the comprehensive plan, I think it's been spoken of in the general plan or the community plan, that actually would come up with some kind of community plan for each area to orderly and have it well conceived, instead of just being random. And a lot of what I just hear here is just random parts, we want this, we want variances, we want mitigation. It would seem more prudent to have an orderly approach so that it doesn't become chaotic. And I know that's a big, a big, big, big job, this is all brand new to everybody, but specific areas seem to be needed, so, you know, it's kind of like the opt-out for certain areas, right? There was some setup early on, and some not, and, you know, there's a battle trying to accomplish that, like the Rush Creek area. So, you know, it just, I think there's a general way of thinking of it, is it gonna be random, or is it gonna be orderly?
Good evening, commissioners and staff, John Brower from Johnson City. And I do have a comment here on, it's finding number three, where it discusses, down at the bottom of the page, says, "Additionally, the Environmental Health Division has expressed concerns that this project has the potential to be injurious to public welfare due to its potential to negatively impact water quality in the surrounding region and watershed." I see environmental health here. Perhaps you can discuss briefly this finding, but all commercial cannabis licensing has to satisfy water board requirements before they can apply for a county permit. And the water board order is very clear about runoff. It seems like this, this particular issue might be the county kind of poking its nose in, in a redundant way, on what is really a water board issue, and if the, if the operation is discharging, it's really a water board issue and not a county issue. Kristi, can you speak briefly to this and explain a little bit?
All new, she's asked by the planning commission.
That's all, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Steve Aldis, Douglas City. Yeah, on tier one and tier two that John was just talking about, tier one is the responsibility of the county, and it's tier two, that's the responsibility of the state, when that slope for discharge becomes greater than 35 percent. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the planning commission. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Comments?
Well, I just, one question I have, Mr. Chair. Kristi, could you speak to the comments and the issues, right?
Sure. My, my position, I'm sorry. My position is to protect the public's health and welfare, and wells in particular, or water for human consumption, is, is the responsibility of the county. So, when we talk about the effects of potential for groundwater contamination, we're talking nitrates and nitrates, which are the same potential contaminants that you see coming from septic systems. And I would have the same exact concern as the septic system is going in that location. It's very toxic to babies, pregnant women, very quickly, and, I mean, really, the whole Now, is there anything specific out of the...
No, I don't know. There's no question, the objection was raised about respectability.
It absolutely is the responsibility of the county.
If I can just add something to that, it's my understanding, although I could be mistaken, it's been known to happen, that the water board is responsible for surface water, and that environmental services then would be key part of the wells.
We do have a water quality ordinance, which we regulate, environmental health does locally. However, as far as surface water runoff and how that's concerned, we kind of co-mingle, but drinking water is always our number one priority.
So you recommended conditions that there would be a concrete floor greenhouse for this project? Your environmental health, under the conditions of approval?
So, one of the conditions, I did mention that the concrete floor greenhouse is a possible mitigation measure. However, I think there is some other building issues that would go along with that because of the area that it's in, that I'm not expert in. Possibly regulatory, is that mentioned? Is it a violation? There was mention of, I'm not, I'm not a building, I'm not a building contractor, but the concrete floor would have to drain off into the tank that's not regularly, and that is something we looked at at other sites, maybe not as conducive in the sharing.
Any other questions of staff? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would like to have one comment. I do believe, as mentioned from a member of the public, that the compliance is one of the main mitigation tools for the cannabis industry environmentally. However, based on the proximity of the neighboring residents and the disservice of the placement of this operation yields, it is difficult to support. Therefore, I recommend that I make a motion to deny... I'll make a motion to deny commercial cannabis variance application CCV 1960 for Emilia Kosovo for the reasons that this variance requires, request is unable to fully meet requirement finding number three, disservice not permitted for Trinity County Code 17.31.010.C. And in addition to the comments made by neighboring residents.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, competing motions?
I just would like to make one comment, and that is that, even though I agree that licensing serves as a mitigation, and, and it kills me to do it, I have to agree that in this case, it's probably not, not in the best interest of the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, I just have to make one comment with regards to, there should be specific findings made about how it is injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare, because that's section three here that you're saying. So we need to have something specific that says, "We're denying it because it is injurious to the public welfare and adjacent properties," which you mentioned, the public's comments. But I think you should specify in your motion that it's due to lighting, noise, odor, and those types of things that are injurious to the public, and make it specific.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, very well, thank you, counsel. I will amend my motion to include the findings of, for lack of better thought, I guess, how this would injure the proximity, the quality of water that can potentially be damaged by the proximity of this cultivation site to property and well number, I don't have the APN number, but would that suffice, counsel, without me having to get into further detail?
Yes.
So I amend my motion as I stated.
Okay, we have amended motion and second. I'm still struggling with this new system we're doing here, and whether or not we need all these to be roll call votes or not. So, help me out here, staff. Do we need...
In the spirit of the evening, why don't we just take a roll call vote?
Okay, thank you.
And Chair, you should vote on the amendment first, and then vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so...
So just take the first, and whether or not there's agreement, it told to the amendment which adds the specific findings, so do that first.
Okay, so we will be voting on amending the motion?
Yes.
Or like, this be a competing motion, I guess, but we'll, we'll take it. We won't do the roll call for the amendment of the motion, I guess, we'll just ask for a voice vote, all in favor of the amended motion?
I'm confused.
You have two, you have two things happening right now.
Why don't you withdraw your motion and make your motion as if, you know, the making of the motion.
This is very simple, extremely simple. No, I'm just saying, what you've done is very simple. He's made a motion, and then he amended that motion. So you have to vote on the amendment to that motion. So all you would be doing is voting on adding the specific findings of the damage to the well, being the specific finding which is injurious to public health, safety, and welfare. You vote on that.
We've never done this before.
Yes, I do agree. I will withdraw my motion and restate it, if it suffices, counsel. So I will make a motion to deny commercial cannabis variance application CCV 19-60 Emilia Kosovo for the reasons that this variance request is unable to fully meet requirement number three, disservice not permitted for Trinity County Code 17.31.010.C., based on the findings that it is injurious to the public and potentially harm adjacent water resources for public consumption.
Okay, we have a new motion.
I'll second that one also.
And a second. So, now we will continue with the roll call vote.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Fraser.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Moving on.
Sheriff Fraser, you need to take a five minute break.
I was just going to suggest that we take a short recess before we jump into the item number six, so we'll reconvene at 8:30. Okay, we will reconvene, and moving on to item number six. Rezone and conditional use permit P-17-45, application requesting number one to rezone an approximately 5.5 acre project site located at 30661 State Highway 3, and 123141 and 221 Marshall Ranch Road, Douglas City. From the highway commercial zoning district to cannabis, to heavy commercial C3 zoning distance, and two, a conditional use permit for a commercial cannabis distribution facility. This project was previously considered by the planning commission in January, that January 10th, 2019 meeting, and the January 17th, 2019 meeting. The sequo determination and rezone components of this project were considered by the Board of Supervisors upon appeal on February 20th, 2019. APN numbers 015-490-08, 09, 10, and 11. Applicants T-mines, proposed sequo determination mitigated negative deck. Oh, and we did have comments from county council in regards to this, to begin with.
Yes, it was brought to our attention before this meeting started today that there is an ongoing litigation involved in this particular item, and we wanted to make sure that all parties are aware that there has not been any stay of these proceedings or in that hearing, so you can hear it today, but if any council member, or commissioner, I should say, is feeling like the fact that there is a litigation involving this is going to cause them to not be able to remain fair and impartial or unbiased in any way, shape, or form on this item, you can certainly recuse yourselves. So if it's having effect on whether or not you think you can make a decision, you should consider that.
Okay, everybody understands that? All right, staff.
Okay, thank you. A bit of a disclaimer here, and there are a few things I want to clarify in the project description. This is a project with a long history, and, and so I had to learn it very quick, maybe not so well, but I've given it my best shot. So to clarify, in the project description, this item was also considered by the planning commission in April 2018. And also, clarification, it was not appealed to the Board of Supervisors, it was forwarded by the At Time Planning Director, Rick Tippett, it was not appealed, it was just forwarded by the planning director under the provisions of our code. So, no appeal is for clarification. I apologize for those mistakes. Okay, so I will get on my staff report. As read, this is an application requesting to rezone approximately 5.5 acre project site, 5.5, 5.6, located on State Highway 3 at Marshall Ranch Road. There are four parcels included in the project, four separate parcels. The application is for a rezone from the highway commercial zoning district to the heavy commercial C3 zoning district. The proposed environmental determination for this project is a mitigated negative declaration. Following the January 17th meeting, oh, actually, let me scoot back there, and let's recap what happened at the January 17th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. At that time, three separate public hearings were held for the project, for each component of the project, or were scheduled, excuse me, scheduled. The first hearing was for the mitigated negative declaration. That was approved for recommendation of Board of Supervisors by a four to one vote. Then the second public hearing was held for the rezone from the highway commercial to the heavy, heavy commercial district. That was a vote of four to one to deny a recommendation, denial for the rezone. At that time, public hearing nor a recommendation was formed for the CUP component of the project. When the project was forwarded to the Board of Supervisors at their February 20th to 2019 meeting, they only reviewed and considered public hearing for the mitigated, made a declaration portion of the project and the rezone, not the entire project. This has been challenging, as I've taken on this project and trying to backtrack and move the project forward. So when the project went to the Board of Supervisors in February, the Board of Supervisors reviewed the mitigated negative declaration, the recommendation for approval by the planning commission, and decided that more work needed to be... by the planning commission, and decided that more work needed to be done on the environmental analysis regarding soils, traffic, and odor. Then the rezone was tabled until the mitigated negative declaration returned to the board. And that's how it was left. So this project, which you may be asking, why is this before us again?
Okay. I believe that actually we did have a hearing on the rezone and took a motion with a vote.
I'm sorry, there was a public hearing on the rezone and there was a vote to recommend denial for one vote.
So they tabled it?
There was no public.
At the board, the board tabled it? Was that what you?
Right.
All right.
Okay, so there was, there was a public hearing, the planning commission on the 17th for the rezone. The rezone was recommended for denial, and then the third hearing for the third component of the project, CUP, which is a pivotal part of the project, was not held. The planning commission denied have a recommendation on that component of the project. So when it went to the board, there was only mitigated negative declaration and the rezone, no CUP. So the question is, I feel that there's probably a question out there, why is this back? It was the planning commission. And I, there's two reasons for that. The first is consider the staff responses based on the direction given by the board to reevaluate soil, traffic, and odor, resources associated with the project. And the second is to consider the project in its entirety. To move forward the project, we must have the project, the entire project together to take to the board. And so revisiting this, the CUP, this, this public hearing will be held as one public hearing, not three for each of the components. So you'll be considering the project in all its entirety.
I, it's been a while, but just thinking back, it's, to me, the reason we didn't consider the CUP was because the denial of the rezone made the CUP not possible. Because the project was not, I can, was not compatible use even with a conditional use permit in the highway commercial zoning. So without rezoning to heavy commercial, the CUP was null and void. It could not be done. And that's why we didn't pick that up.
I understand that logic, but moving forward with the project and only having part of it go to the Board of Supervisors is problematic. It needs to be viewed in its entirety, in my opinion.
Okay, the, I have a question. I guess that would be for council then. How could we consider a CUP on a project that zoning wise, if we, if we said we did not recommend zoning change, how could we consider the CUP that wouldn't be allowed in the zoning that we were recommending it stay at? If, without recommending it be rezoned to C3, to heavy commercial, we can't, we can't pass a CUP to allow the project to go forward and?
The problem is.
We could get public input on the CUP on the record. And then there will have been a public hearing, which it sounds like we'll have tonight. So there's a public hearing on the record and we could, if, if the C3 thing does not happen, we could recommend the board a denial of the other one based on zoning.
Okay, all right. So we're just gonna have one broad public hearing where it's a free for all, whichever part of the project you want to talk about, and then we'll go from there. Is what I'm getting from staff.
Yeah, and it's afforded due process to all parts of the components of the project to the applicant. And if you were at the last time to have denied the CUP based on the non-zoning, it would have been fine. But because it never was actually held and brought forward, that's the problem.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yes.
Okay, continue.
Well, not much more, but you're right. Okay, so I'm, I just will briefly review. We're going to great depth in the staff report. I will briefly review our analysis of the three items that we're supposed to, actually kind of four, three and a half, that were evaluated for mitigated negative declaration per the direction of the Board of Supervisors. The first is hazards and materials and soil contamination. And I think this is a very important point to make, that sequo generally does not require public agency to analyze impacts that existing environmental conditions might have on a project's future users or residents. So simply put, it's the effect of the project on the environment, not the environment on the project. And that was a question regarding the past historical use of the site, the potential contaminants with soil and water. So the agency must analyze how environmental conditions might adversely affect the project's residents or users, only where the project itself might worsen the existing situation. In this case, there are no, there are no residences, there are no schools. This is a distribution facility with possibly up to 10 employees maximum. And so we're not looking at uses that would be affected by the contamination such as the residents. So again, it's the effect of the, the project on the environment, not the environment on the project. And the use of this nature, we don't see a significant impact. The staff report goes into the soil samples that were done, soil samples were taken at the site and tested. And arsenic, cadmium, and lead were looked at specifically. And there were, you know, arsenic obviously is natural occurring. Did not see anything that would trigger a significant impact as regarding soil contamination. The result of the reevaluation of potential hazards and materials of soils of the project site, it remains clear offsite contamination has not impacted the project site. And the development of proposed project will have less than significant impact with that respect to hazards from soil contamination. With the soil contamination discussions, and this was not specifically directed by the Board of Supervisors for staff to explore, but with soil, we also took a look at water, so kind of added that other item in the evaluation. And as related to the soils evaluation, there was, and there was analysis done. No groundwater contamination was present at the offsite properties. And for the onsite property, applicant has documentation of the onsite water well, has available water supplies needed for the proposed uses. So we did not see issues with water contamination or for the proposed use, the availability of water for that distribution use specifically. Third item is traffic. We do have Department of Transportation Director Rick Tippett here this evening. And I'm not sure if Ann is still there. You might have escaped. But we do have Rick here to answer any questions. The staff is of the opinion that maintains that with the access of Highway 3 to the distribution facility and the access would be limited with the CUP just to traffic from Highway 3, not Marshall Ranch Road. That of this, the traffic, the level of service is well within the parameters. There is no significant impact. I have Rick here, so I'm gonna defer to him if there are any further questions on the traffic. But again, we determined that impacts associated with the development of this project were less than significant regarding traffic. Air quality slash odor slash smell, this is always a tough one. Smell and odor are so subjective. However, the distribution facility will not, there'll be no cultivation, processing, and manufacturing proposed with the project. As previously evaluated, cannabis odors are known to be the most significant from cannabis flowers and live plants thrown indoors and some processing and manufacturing. So why it is likely that some odor will occur in the cannabis distribution facility, it's unlikely that the levels of odors will be significant. Also want to state that neither the county cannabis regulations related to distribution or the California Bureau of Cannabis Control, BCC, has specific regulations or requirements for odor control at distribution facilities. Since the proposed use would not have a cannabis cultivation, processing, or manufacturing, the potential impacts from the odors affecting offsite properties is considered to be low. And county staff's opinion is that there will be less than significant impact on air quality related to cannabis odors with the implementation of the proposed project. With that, again, odor is highly subjective. Should the proposed project use be developed and odors cause significant issues, it'll be the applicant's responsibility to reduce or eliminate odor leaving the property. Appropriate actions reduce odor emissions should they become an issue. May include, may include, excuse me, the implementation of odor reducing practices, the installation of odor reduction mechanical equipment, or the equivalent or combination of both. The project permittee would be responsible for future odor reduction methods should they determine to be required and become useless. In conclusion, based on the discussed findings, staff is of the opinion that the original findings of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration regarding soil, water, traffic, soil, water, traffic, and odor remain valid, and no change to the initial study is warranted at this time. Any future proposed projects, amendments, change project descriptions are gonna require permit oversight from the county, which would further evaluate the impacts of those proposed uses on the site should they come in the future. So we do need to focus on, on the project, and that is a distribution facility. Okay, and also touched on the staff report, it's a consideration of project in entirety, in its entirety, which I think we covered quite well on that point. So I feel like I'm missing something, but I'm sure it will come up. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions for staff at this point?
Aside from the additional sequel work that was done in response to the request from the board to look at those three items, are there any changes whatsoever in the application from what was done in, from what we looked at in January? Or is the, the project, the application is identical?
Yes.
With the exception of this additional sequel information?
Yes, additional analysis on those issues.
Okay.
No changes to the project whatsoever.
All right, thank you.
Except the project description, the current project description, unless I'm reading it wrong, is asking for a distribution facility. And the original one in 2019 was for a storage and distribution facility.
Storage and distribution, distribution facility would be correct. We go for 2019. That was my mistake. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open the public comment?
Just a, just a question about the public notice. So I mean, in some of the comments that were received, they said the notice was given or received on Friday, January 3rd, and comments were due on Monday, the next business day. Is it, is that, and that just seems like a really quick turnaround.
Yes, and we did, we do accept comments. To make it into the staff report and to get those distributed to you in a memo, it's a tough turnaround. Yes, that is, would be correct. There are also comments made that their office is closed on Fridays, and that's when the staff report becomes available. Some of the, I'm sure we'll make sure to pass some wording in our notices that we can have staff reports available somehow on Fridays. Even if, even if the office is closed, we're still there. I would be happy to get those staff reports out. Yeah, I wish it wasn't that way, but that is the way we did get the staff report done on Friday. It was directed by the planning commission. Technically, they don't need to go out until 72 hours into the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, no more questions to staff? With that, we will open this up to public comments.
Applicant first?
Yeah.
If, yeah, I see the applicant back there. We will hear from the applicant first. And before we get really into this, I would ask people to, if you, if you hear somebody say the same thing that you're going to say, in the spirit of getting out of here before midnight, could we try not to be redundant? Mr. Mines, go ahead, sir.
Well, we're back. I think there was a little misconfusion on some things, but I believe we're here to try and provide some jobs for this community. We're here based on, they've given us a path to start this process, and everybody here still doesn't really have many outlets, and that was still the best option and best opportunity. Not that I really want to be that anymore. But we're a little deep into this one now, and I would like to get past all the prior ridiculousnesses that you guys had heard that weren't truths. You know, I had a lot of things that we had to come back and spend some more money to prove that the wells were good, the ground was safe. I know I'm accused of creating smells there. There's a kid that goes to school there at Chastor College in the house. I know there's a lot of still false accusations. I don't really want to get there. I just want to get to where we can provide jobs. They brought a lot of people here today that actually want a job. They want to live here. They want to make this a better community. They want more than three restaurants in Weaverville. They'd like some economic viability, some economic revitalization. And that's what I'm willing to do, is revitalize an area of this county that has not been utilized in quite a long time. It's a perfectly acceptable area. I know everybody's worried about smells. It's actually, like you said, it's a processed product. It's in a jar. You guys, there's not gonna be any smell, but we can put a HIPAA filter up. For some reason, someone can smell through sealed jars. I can do that. As far as safety, it will be safe 100%. It will have all the necessary means. The state of California is forcing me into having to make it that way. And we will do that. We're not gonna be some huge, large business. I don't think that's even feasible anymore with where our whole ordinance has gone and where things are going. It's more about survival at this point. And I think that a lot of people are counting on me and myself and my family to survive here. And a lot of young people that would like jobs that actually want to have a future here. So we, I do, by the way, I do have a manufacturing plant. That's down at my house. So there is not gonna be manufacturing. I know people threw this all into me. I know they were scared of water and ice, because that's what we use to manufacture. It's a terrifying thing. Didn't even have to get sprinklers from the fire department. That's how ser, seriously scary it is. But we're just, we need a place to distribute, and based on the way the ordinances were laid out and the way the zonings all had to be, we couldn't do it on our property, so we had to have something. Everyone kind of needs this, so I think it's important to push this forward based on jobs. And, and we'll do this right. This is what we want to do. Thank you. Just any questions I can answer. But there is no manufacturing. We already had that set up somewhere else.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Public comment, yes.
Good evening, Liam Gogan, Douglas City. Sorry for cutting off Terry there. Everybody's getting up. I think tonight you're gonna hear from our community in Douglas City that we do not want this facility here. It's not in the right place. You probably see 150 odd signatures. Every neighbor of this parcel, north, south, east, and west, is against this. We, she had said if there's an odor complaint, that the owner would have to take care of it. And I was looking, it came that there's 43 trips in and out of this facility, which is capable of triggering a traffic investigation if it goes over 50. So right now, we're at 86% of that capacity. Who is responsible for any? Who is responsible for any portion of maybe putting a right-hand turn lane in there? Does it go to the owner? Does it come to the people? I think it's environmentally sound, and I also know that there is better places for this, especially in Hayfork. There's a few of them there. I know there's a big professional company coming to Hayfork that will do exactly what this is going to do. They are proven, and they're going to employ a lot of people at probably a lot higher rates. So there will be manufacturing distributing in our county, maybe just a few miles away from there. But you will be seeing, I think at the next board meeting, a presentation from a very reputable group of manufacturers that own, have been proven to be successful, environmentally sound group, that has done very well everywhere they've gone. And they're going to do it in a place that does not need a zoning change, does not have 150 of the, of Douglas City, as we all know, there's not a whole bunch of people in Douglas City. That's a large portion of our, of our community. Also, I don't want to put off that, that Douglas City, myself, or most of these people on the, on the signature list are anti-cannabis. You know, we are not. We are, we are open to cannabis. We would like to have manufacturing in our county. It's going to come when we need it. And also on the signature list, you will find many people who grow cannabis on that list. So it's not a anti-cannabis cannabis thing. It's just, this is not the right spot. Four sides of it don't want it. 150 other people don't want it. We're not sure the implications of the traffic yet. Who burden, who bears the burden? If we need a right-hand turn lane to go in there? I was in here six, eight months ago. I think if we put a right-hand turn lane in Denny for some reason, and I think the cost is $2 million, who bears that? You know, what is that fault? I know the odor thing-
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's Paul Womack. This is signatures, and this is the night brief that I'll be discussing the topics for this.
Good morning, Commissioner State Albies of Douglas City. I live on Marshall Ranch Road, one foot from the proposed rezoning parcels. And I would like to point, ask you a pointed question. Have you been able to read all the materials that we have presented, both to the new materials since we discussed this last January, and the materials that we provided to the board, which was a lot more discovery? As we go along, we have learned an awful lot more information on this project. So I hope, if I can get the question answered, if you've seen all those materials that were online, it's a packet about this thing. All right, okay, thank you. Okay, as again, there is a great opposition in the community of Douglas City to this project, and it is now up to 195, really over 200 signatures in the local DC area alone. I'm not even going to talk about the rest of the county. What we don't believe, that this environmental constraint support the proposed new zoning project request. We don't believe the traffic report presented tonight addresses the major concerns the boss sent back to the planning department for further study regarding Marshall Ranch Road improvement requirements, which were not discussed, nor Highway 3 turn lane requirements in the proposed project and rezone requests. That now, for the first time, lists three instead of one parcel on Marshall Ranch Road. We don't believe the traffic report accurately reflects the needs and in turn, future needs for the required turn lane update on Highway 3. This turn lane and Marshall Ranch Road improvements would cost the county millions of dollars. We don't believe taking away property from current Marshall Ranch Road residents to meet California road requirements is justified, nor the millions of dollars it would cost the county taxpayers to do it. Since Marshall Ranch Road is a loop, the entire road would have to be improved because both interest in using it to provide business clients. We don't believe that soil contamination issue described by the boss has been resolved. These parcels were reportedly also owned by the same logging company with contamination issues described in the planning report itself, yet not inspected because they were owned by someone else at the time of inspection. Why? Deep restrictions were placed on this property, but not the mine's property. Proposed sites, why? We don't believe the odor issue as described by the boss has been properly addressed either, nor to the extent they proposed. What has not openly been discussed is the fact that the distribution center can't take whole plants from the growers, dry, process, and package them on-site, more than just prepackaged products cleaned in a jar. We don't believe that the lack of owners' due diligence for discovery before investing in any real estate venture, especially concerning community input, water capabilities, septic limitations, and soil contamination constraints warrants communities suffering economic loss in improving these deficiencies for them. We don't believe this project, proposed project, will not injure the public health and welfare of our entire community, nor will it improve our economic benefit. No taxes directly to the community, no county. Little to no housing is available in our community, so employees will be living in other districts or counties. Employment opportunities are left wanting now in this county. Plenty of jobs are available. Our county, so much so, we have to hire from a pool of residents outside the county. We don't believe a school bus stop located across from Highway less than 150 feet from the proposed project site should be moved just to accommodate the proposed project. Alone, have our children, let alone have our children transiting to and from that bus stop with the project site between the homes and the bus stop. We don't believe our residents' neighbors are any less deserving than the children in recreational areas, parks, etc. They live there 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. Well, here we are again, as he said. Three minutes is pretty short time. We've been here before. My comments included links to all of the past, as well as other information that has come along since we last joined each other in meetings. And we've presented to you and to the staff pages and pages of documentation with corrected information, along with public concern against this project. So let's add the new errors. The original project stated that he would have a maximum of 20 employees, not 10, which would then trigger the need for an additional bathroom, which would trigger the need for additional septic. That has not been looked at, or there's not even a suggestion by the planning staff to, they're going to have to add it, which should be there. The bus stop is within 300 feet of project parcel. The photo is there. Current staff report gives an in-depth report on parcels adjacent and says that they couldn't find the environmental constraints filing. I have given you a copy of the filing. It is in that packet. In the last six months alone, our neighborhood has been subjected to a gaseous cloud. Again, photos in your packet. Consistent noise of engines and/or machinery, increased traffic on Marshall Ranch Road, and increased public access from the parcels. They walk up and down. We've had people walk up and down those, the Marshall Ranch Road. And let's not forget, now all of a sudden, we have Marshall Ranch Road attached to three of these parcels. And that is a residential neighborhood. It looks like an auto repair, but I don't know for sure, but that's what all of the noise in commercial, what appears to be commercial activity looks like. These parcels have been in use commercially for many, 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 many years. There was no one that needed to come along and save them. There is still potential for these as highway commercial. And the violations that occur right now, at least in the last six months that I can document, have occurred after 5:00 PM. Who do we call? Well, I found out. We call, and it goes nowhere. There is no enforcement with it. Mr. Mines has said at many public meetings that we have tested this water well multiple times and given the results to planning. The only well test on file was from 2014. They purchased it, or they deeded in June of 2017. Rezoning is not a right by law. Let's use his argument, which he does use, that this is, for some reason, a right by law, and this is a land use issue. Land use and zoning ordinances are developed and created through thoughtful planning for the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. These have had commercial use. They did not sit unused. They have been subjected to real and serious environmental issues that need, that continue to be overlooked. The current Douglas City plan supports our claims that this is incompatible. And until the new general plan is created, the public is already letting you know that they feel that this is incompatible with the Douglas City plan and the characteristics of our community. There's more things in there in that packet that I hope you will read, because three minutes for three really large things is not enough time. So we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Paul, is there, I live on Rush Creek Drive, but I have a first-grade daughter that attends Douglas City Elementary School. I'm actually not on the petition, but would love to sign it if added names. It seems, I strongly concur with your original recommendation or your original finding that not to rezone the property, but seems this meeting is about getting public comment on the record. And I just have to concur that this is in no way a compatible site for this industrial process. If the facility were to be built, the inevitable odor problems, there would be no way to mitigate them, other than neighbors having to leave the area. Thanks.
John Brower from Junction City. I actually have a question. Are we, are you taking comment on both the rezone and the CUP together right now, or just the rezone?
The rezone, CUP, and the mitigated negative.
Then, just a few thoughts. The surrounding community seems strongly against the project as, as it appears in this project description, which is unfortunate. The entire county does desperately need commercial cannabis distribution, not just one in Hayfork, but many distribution facilities in that community. We've got at least 4,000 or 5,000 commercial grows in the county, 300 current permittees. There's an obvious benefit to the county to permit more distribution. The site is perfectly situated for transportation and warehousing. It seems to me that many of the concerns are about the rezone encouraging very intensive uses and heavy commercial C3. And I just want to lobby for compromise, I think. Perhaps the applicant could rezone to C2 instead of C3 or industrial. Perhaps there could be a compromise where one parcel is rezoned to industrial, the rest are remain highway commercial, something like that. Odor can be very well mitigated with carbon filters and other technology. It would be tragic to lose this potential location for this use. And it seems like there could be ways to make it more palpable to the surrounding neighbors. With that said, I would encourage the commission to try to find, or encourage some sort of compromise to make something like this work. Thank you.
My name is Miranda Medine, and I own a home with my husband Jed Medine on Marshall Ranch Road behind the proposed project. I would like to discuss the use comparisons that have been drawn between HC and C3 zoning and both the general supporting arguments and the environmental initial study analyses. The comparisons include HC allowable businesses such as restaurants and motels that lead to the conclusion that the proposed rezone will have the same, if not a reduced, impact on the environment. I feel that these comparisons are misleading, as the topic of whether or not the parcels are currently appropriately zoned for HC usage have not been discussed. When the rezone from HC to C3 of the AmeriGAS parcel to the south took place in 1989, supporting arguments included the finding that the parcel was unsuitable for most uses allowed under the existing zoning due to poor soils for sewage disposal systems. In regard to the parcels currently being considered for the rezone, there are indications that a similar situation exists. The original septic installation form for the CUP parcel states that the septic is approved for one toilet and one hand sink only, emphasis on only, and that any other usage will require soil excavation and expansion of the field. The county has repeatedly stated that the septic has been deemed adequate, but on what grounds has the septic been deemed adequate for the proposed usage of up to 10 full-time and up to 10 additional seasonal employees? Approaching the rezone for the current parcel should follow the same methodology used in the AmeriGAS rezone. Potential effects on the environment should be analyzed based on the current and historical uses for the parcels and how that usage will change with the rezone and CUP, instead of a comparison based on imaginary scenarios such as a restaurant that could never be supported by conditions present on the parcels. There are many additional issues that have been brought up regarding the incompatibility of the proposed usage and the ability of the land to support those uses. One of these issues includes firsthand witness testimonies that the current water source has repeatedly run dry historically, which contradicts with the well production tests from 2014, which is more of a snapshot in time. The response to these issues seems to have overwhelmingly been to delay the issues, pass the responsibility, or proposed Band-Aid fixes, such as the use of bottled water or hauling wastewater discharge off-site. Band-Aid fixes are okay for emergency situations, but we shouldn't be willingly walking into a situation where they are expected and have been become a part of the business plan. When rezoning parcels, it should be determined whether the circumstances present in the land can adequately support the end purpose of the rezone. A cannabis distribution center should be a long-term establishment that provides a safe and adequate environment for its employees. I personally believe this can be accomplished by placing a distribution center in an area with municipal water and sewage services, and in a less rural location in closer proximity to responding law enforcement.
Anyone else?
Steve wrote us to respect your, Mr. Frazier's comment of not to reiterate the things that have already been spoken of, you know, specific to security and safety and water and odor and traffic and bus stop. I just want to say I don't think it's an appropriate location either.
Thank you.
Gene Goodyear. You know, we have, right now, somewhere north of 5,000 grows in Trinity County, of which we're only going to permit 500. So we've got a big problem. And in meeting and trying to figure out this problem, one of the things that keeps coming up is the fact that we don't have an updated general plan. That's a big issue. We can't, we can't, we're having a hard time dealing with what we have going on right now, all the illegal grows and all the destruction. You know, our family's been here for, you know, we've been contributing to this county and community for 100 years, and I've seen a lot of people like the Eaglesons earlier come, build their retirement home, and again, leave because of what's been going on. And to zone this, rezone this property for this use, when we have all these issues of water, and I fully agree, it should be in municipal, municipal water, municipal sewer, and the whole nine yards. I just can't see how you can possibly approve something like this in a residential neighborhood with so much opposition.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jed Medine. I live right next to the property that they're trying to-
I live right next to the property that they're trying to rezon. We're kind of worried about taking four of just the, of just nine highway commercial zone parcels away from our core business area, set forth as essential in supporting our core industry, recreation and tourism, and turning them into heavy commercial industrial zone. These rezones would forever change the entire character of our community, creating a huge industrial park along our scenic highway and destroy the adjacent neighborhood, which I'm part of, and those surrounding it from higher elevations. We don't believe Mr. Mines wishes to create a distribution center, but as he has stated too many, and in written form and in prior rezon applications, that in the near future he wishes to start up manufacturing and cultivation on these sites. We do believe we have updated our community plan with over 195 Douglas City residents signing petitions against the proposed Mines project. From all sides of our community, including growers and non-growers, we believe this growing industry deserves a place in our county, but this is not the right spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Veronica Madine, and I would just like to submit a letter. And I'm not going to speak. Do you think I should start with my name?
Thank you.
We only got two copies. Not to be too redundant, I just am hopeful that the commission votes to turn this down and not rezon it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fred DeAntoni from Douglas City. I am against cannabis. But having said that, the law allows it to happen. We are required to follow the law, just as you are required by zoning codes and everything else. We've heard lots tonight about mitigation, how that's the way to make this process work. Mitigation is not only licensing, but includes denial and refusal to grant a variance and/or grant a rezon. Just because an applicant wants one of the above, we don't have to do it just to make them happy. We have also heard that compliance is gained through mitigation, but as US commissioners also need to remember, that compliance is gained through enforcement, as well as following the existing rules and laws and codes regarding the requested rezon. In short, the decision to rezon or not should not, need not be granted just because an applicant or a appellant does not like the answer they've been given previously. It's like a petulant child who wants his way and keeps stomping his feet until it gets his way. I'm a parent. We didn't do that in my house. We didn't do it in the house I grew up in. I'm hoping you don't do that tonight. Because there is no reason to rezon unless you want to allow that or encourage that behavior, I strongly hope that you do not allow the rezon and we continue along the path you seem to have gone before tonight. As far as starting this and allowing this process to continue, you've opened Pandora's box at that point. The smells, the contaminants, whatever they may be, have gone at that point. You can't go back and correct those. Yet you allow it if you allow the rezon. Pandora's box is open, the damage is done, the bad living condition is done. Maybe it goes away because you then stop it, but it's already happened. And so again, I'd encourage you to not allow that. Thank you.
Justin Hawkins from Hayfork. You know, I think, I drive by this place all the time. And while it's zoned HC, I think that the totality of all the, you know, comments suggest that that's not even appropriate zone for this location. And I think that if, the idea that a restaurant won't be able to be served there, or a hotel won't be able to reasonably be served there, then probably should be rezoned. I mean, that's really where the logic goes. If HC is not appropriate, maybe it should be rezoned. And C3 would probably be appropriate. I would have looked at C2. I think the neighbors want it to be open space, but they haven't said that. So I think that this parcel, if these parcels are actually going to become productive, that probably should be rezoned. I mean, that's the way, they're underserved currently. And the water resources suggest that, you know, an HC zoning is probably not appropriate, actually. So the propane facility is HC, I'm sorry, C3, right? And across the street is industrial, so it's not as if this is incompatible to use with the neighborhood, in my opinion. As far as actually putting a distribution center in there, it's a great spot because it's close to Highway 3 and 299. So it's in the center of the county for distribution. And I think that you have moving it to Hayfork, the suggestion being that there's people coming to this county that are going to set up big operations, but from what I just heard, you guys are from the East Coast. That is outside interest coming in, big money. I thought that's what we were trying to work against in this county. I would also go ahead and mention that the odor complaints, I mean, distribution, it has to be prepackaged when it comes there. It doesn't have a processing license, so they're going to be. The odor is probably overstated. And my concern with the odor mitigations in here is that code enforcement will take care of it. Well, if there's a complaint, how is actually that complaint verified? I don't think we have a good methodology in this county for identifying odor complaints. If you read the draft EIR, they want an expert in our county who's, you know, can, has the ability to detect different aromas and verify the location it's coming from and a particular compound, which is of course not possible, really. So there's really not a good way to deal with that situation, I'll be honest. Because then it leads to a situation where a neighbor can complain without any actual evidence, and the way to resolve that's not clear. So I think that that's a problematic way of approaching odor. Page 17 of the stack report also talks about the license, the CUP being available for one year. I have no idea why planning staff keeps adding this, but in a CUP, you're allowed two years. So for cannabis, I like to just make it one, which is hard to deal with, with the way licensing is to get your county and state license. I think they need two years as allowed by Trinity County Code. Thank you.
My name is Scott Morris. I can hear standing solidarity with the folks who've signed the petition in Douglas City. Sadly, our county has been hoisted upon by unfunded mandates by the California Initiative Procedence that says we will legalize marijuana and you will have marijuana. And we are the ones who are having to bear that burden in Trinity County. And we look at the number of grows that we have here, the number of illegal grows. Justin refers to people coming from out of the area. One has to be blind, not to see, the license plates that we have here from all over the United States to grow marijuana. And I think a very small percentage of our legal marijuana, that percentage stays here in the state, I think we are growing for the rest of the nation. And I really appreciate the hard work that you guys do, because you're the bulwark. You're our protection. You're the ones who are helping us, who are non-growers, who want to live in our neighborhoods without the impact of cannabis. And that's a hard position to be in. And we need your help, and we appreciate that help when we can get it. Sadly, this has sucked the creative oxygen out of Trinity County, that all we are folks get stoned, most of our conversations are around cannabis. And we've become a monoculture economy, just as we did with timber and other economies in this county. And we need to be able to move beyond this and to look at other economic opportunities in this county. If we only focus on cannabis, we're going to be left where we were with timber and gold and other resources extrication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Cross. I own the industrial property across the street from the Bree property. And it's turned it off. I'm not against development. I would like to see that development staged in some way that would help the community. And maybe that would help out some of the problems that we're seeing with the neighbors and stuff. Including water, one of the primary ones. Water is a big issue in all of the county. Good drinking water, good water for irrigation or for other uses. Another one is the traffic. Right now, the traffic is excellent, fine line through that section, no complaints. Hopefully, this doesn't involve causing a change in that, making it more complicated, you know, to the point where we have a boulevard stoplight heading or something. Anyway, so worry about that coming up in the future, but if we can direct the development in this area of the county to what it helps all the people involved, and not maybe one person or one parcel, that might be the best way to mitigate your work, what's going on at the county, and in this parcel. By the way, thank you for your reports. This is, that report was quite interesting, I enjoyed reading it.
Tyler Knight, I live in Douglas City. I think it's kind of important to realize, whether people want to admit it or not, the cannabis industry has been holding up this county economically for decades now. And I think now with this legalization, we have the opportunity to contribute to this economy in more meaningful ways, right? Thus far, it's been through ancillary businesses, providing people the means to put food on their table and shoes on their kids' feet, right? But now in these more meaningful ways, we can contribute to the school systems, the roads, law enforcement, all of these things, right? And all of us cultivators up here, we are in the grand scheme of things, we're small farms. And that's because of the limitations that's been put on the cultivation area during the lawmaking and vetting of this cannabis program. And because of that, the large distribution companies do not care about us. They do not care about us at all, because they can go right down the street to these large cultivation operations, and it's much easier for them. You know, it's like, we do not matter at all. And the sustainability and economic viability of this industry, and thus this economy, they depend on projects like these ones, where it's local people who care about their community, right? It's not, I think there's a misconception here. It's like, I hear all this stuff about legal grows and illegal grows, and like, the people who are trying to do this through the licensure process, we don't want, all of these things that are giving us a bad name, we don't want them around either. And it's not because we don't like being called bad names, it's because we don't like them in our community, you know? It's like, we're all on the same page here. I mean, it's not, you know, I'm a young person, right? I want to live in a place where I know that I have economic security, and it's a safe place for me to build and grow a family. These are the things that I want, okay? And I think that every, pretty much everybody sitting in this room is probably feeling the same way. And I think that the crux of this issue seems to have fallen on the rezoning, right? Because all of the other things seem to be, the CUP seems to be satisfied, all of the requirements for that, right? And the zoning now is not necessarily like a law or a right, correct? In its, in its own opinion. So I, I think that basing these decisions on a fear of something that isn't actually going to happen, like, there's not, Marshall Ranch Road, right? Nobody's going to be entering this place from Marshall Ranch Road. It's all coming from Highway 3. That's, that's almost an irrelevant thing, right? Like, yeah, sure, maybe that could happen, but honestly, that's not the case. Come on, guys, let's leave, let's leave, let's leave a little common sense here. We need this. We need this as, as small farmers, and that's everybody here. Even these, these large places downtown, they dwarf, even the two one acre parcels were the biggest ones, right? They dwarf those ones. And so like, we, we need somebody who cares about us. And we care about this community, too, you know? It's like, it's not, this isn't a one-sided thing, you know? We're not trying to extract all this money. We're here so that like, we can inject some, some income into this community and into this economy, so it's a better place for everybody, you know? It's not, it's not just all about this. And I, I think that stalling, stalling projects like these, and we need more than, more than just one or two up here, we need a bunch to make this actually work. And I think stalling projects like these is very short-sighted, and I think it's very irresponsible to all of your constituents, okay? And it's like, people need to be able to make a living here. Retirement checks are not going to allow for people to make a living here. We need a real economy. We need a real economy. And that's, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Oh. What are they working on?
I believe children are one of our greatest assets. It's our responsibility as adults to protect and provide healthy environments that are safe. Neighborhoods with stable families are one of our greatest assets. It's what's made Weaverville great in the past. Please remember those that are too small to speak for themselves. Money's not everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anyone else? Saying none again, we'll bring it back to the commission. Questioners? Any thoughts, questions, comments?
This property is actually the ideal location for a distribution facility. As was said by Mr. Hawkins, it is located on Highway 3, right near 299. It's accessible from all areas of the county. Another distribution facility besides the one in Hayfork is essential. It's something that is really necessary. It doesn't do any good if we license growers and they have no place to move their, no way to move their crop. I cannot stress enough how much this is needed.
I think we observed last January the wishes of the community expressed in their community plan. This is part of the Douglas City Core District. It's highway commercial. It's four lots, I've forgotten to count now. Nine? Four lots, so it's almost half of the highway commercial on the highway there. The update, as the signatures were characterized as an update to the community plan, and there's certainly some validity to that. We're about to embark, I hope, soon on the general plan update, which will include community plan updates. And we're hearing from the Douglas City community, the surrounding community right where this is, about how they want to see this part of the area developed. None of that's changed since we reviewed this in January and reached the conclusion that it's not an appropriate rezon at the site.
that it's not an appropriate rezone if it's site. Open to having distribution in an appropriate spot. It just strikes me that nothing's changed since January and this remains the wrong spot.
I can't, I cannot see any of, most of the usual highway commercial industries being able to build or be in that area because of the problems that are there. This is, this is something that fits that area. I understand that it's zoned highway commercial. I'm not sure it should remain, as some, one of the members of the public said, I am not sure it should remain highway commercial. I'm not sure if it remains highway commercial. It will ever look any different than it does right this minute.
Which doesn't put us in the position that we ought to preemptively take it out of highway commercial.
It's not preemptively. We're following the procedures to do so.
No, we're preempting the wishes of the community to a very large extent by, by taking the action. So I don't support it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I do definitely agree with Commissioner Stewart, a distribution facility is needed. It is a big part of the puzzle. And in order for the cannabis community that's making the most, utmost effort to comply with county and state legislature, it is definitely, it's an important part of the puzzle. And yes, the site is adequate. It's a great physical location, intersects with Highway 3, it's a wide turn-in. However, there's just certain inherent issues with this parcel that just makes it difficult to approve. And one of my concerns is also in where we should not speculate on future uses, but by rezoning this, Mr. Mines, like other people have, and I'm not saying he's going to do this, could potentially sell this to, for a type seven manufacturing facility, or who knows what other proposed use this could take place. And then we must consider that as well, like, you know, by rezoning this, these properties, what, what could potentially take place? That is definitely a concern. I, I don't see the need, and we stated this before, earlier, the last year, I don't see the need that why we need to rezone four parcels when only one will be used for the distribution facility. And then in fact, that would, I am opposed of rezoning all four parcels because that would just, again, the properties could be split off, sold, and then all this access to Marshall Road would essentially be a commercial access. And then that, that's troublesome for the neighborhood immediately adjacent to these parcels. So...
If you'll recall, last year, I suggested on the rezoning one parcel, that was my motion and nobody else.
Furthermore, I'm sorry, and septic definitely does need to look into. By OSHA standards, for every 15 employees, you need two restrooms. I mean, to have like a half pat, the septic system is completely inadequate. And the new percolation test or a revamp of the entire system would need to take place if this rezone or if the conditional use permit is approved.
Commissioner Matthews, do you have anything to add?
It's very difficult to support this when a community poses such numbers, regardless of the benefits that they have.
I would say the biggest issue I have with supporting it is not necessarily the project itself, but the fact that by rezoning, which I said in our stoppage report, we're supposed to consider the project, I do believe that we also have to consider the other permissible uses of C3 zoning. If we rezone this, that property can be sold and any other heavy commercial use can move into that. And I don't think that that's something we should open up the core area of Douglas City to. I think there is a reason that their community plan wants it to be highway commercial. Whether those highway commercial businesses are viable in the future, we'll, we'll find out. The, the thing is, I don't think that we should open that up to heavy commercial use, especially without the support of the surrounding community. With that said, would anybody care to make a motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have one more comment. And this, and I meant to bring this up at Mr. Davidian's CUP that we addressed last year, and I noticed that this is also in this conditional use permit, on a condition of 13, number 13 says, "Failure to permit you to make use of this use permit within one year or failure to comply," essentially nulls the permit. The ordinance, county ordinance stipulates two years, so I just want to make that note. And from now on, I'm not opposed of a more stringent condition, but the reasons for that stringent condition needs to be applied if that's going to be stated. So that's...
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd even for a motion on everything. On everything. The CEQA, the, and the... See? Well, we've had one public comment, we've heard a comment, we've heard environmental issues, we've heard rezoning issues, and we've heard issues regarding with distribution. So we have public comment on all three.
Yes.
Do you want three motions or...
There is a resolution. You do have a resolution?
We have a resolution to approve.
You do have a resolution to approve. It's, I'm sorry.
We're asked to go the other way. Could I want three motions or not?
No.
Can you enlighten us here?
Yeah, it kind of matters on what direction you're going. If there is a resolution available to you that includes all three components of the project, and that reflects staff's recommendation of recommending approval on those three items, so...
Again, it kind of depends on what you're doing and just as a hypothetical, if you were to recommend to the board of supervisors to approve and certify the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, being consistent with CEQA, and adopting that, you can do that. If you were to say, however, you recommend to the board of supervisors that the parcels 08, 09, 10, and 11 be not rezoned, or if you're saying parcel eight gets rezoned to HC3, and the other three remain as they are, however you want to do that, but you do need to go through the, the resolution hasn't stated here on page two, and so you're going to want to go through and do them individually or as a part of a giant motion, however you want to do them. But you do need to address all three subjects because they're all part of this project, and that makes it clear and gives, again, if this is denial, we need to have a specific reason why it's, why not just a flat denial.
Okay. So would you, are you prepared to make a motion or three motions?
All right, I'll take the shot. Right. I move that we recommend to the board of supervisors that they not approve the mitigated negative declaration, that they not rezone the four parcels, and they not approve the conditional use permit, finding that the mitigated negative declaration doesn't adequately address the issues raised of traffic and water, and that the rezone is inconsistent with the community plan, the Douglas City community plan, as refreshed by new input from the community, the community plan being dated. So the new input from the community reflecting an update intent of the community plan, and that the conditional use permit is being denied because highway commercial is not an appropriate zone for distribution.
Got it all in there. Does anyone have a motion? Anyone who cares to second that motion?
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion or motions? Hearing none, we will, I guess, once again, in the spirit of tonight, have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stewart?
Nay.
Commissioner...
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Sheriff Frasier?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion carries Board One. Thank you. Moving on, we will go to agenda item number seven, I believe. Yeah. Matters from the commission?
I have a question for the staff. It's mostly a comment that may result in something you need to look at. It's my understanding that the new Title 24 reflects...
Can you, can you keep the noise down out there, please? We're still trying to conduct business. Thank you.
The new Title 24 reflects a CAL FIRE requirement for 30-foot setbacks for any new, at least residential structures, if not other structures as well. And I think we will have to address, many of our, since I took a trip through Title 17 tonight, many of our sections don't have anything close to that in our residential setback section. So I'm curious to understand how we will apply that and try and be consistent with it, since it's in Title 24 with a new state code for... So I'm guessing this is more a comment, I don't expect to interview you, but at some point, we are going to have to figure out how we factor that into the zoning ordinance.
Yes, fire, state's fire safety regulations were updated and went into effect January 1st. There's some new changes in those. And one of those being originally in the state response areas for parcels over one acre in size.
I think we cut you off, but this is not an agendized item. I think it's appropriate for you to ask for it and report back that on the next one, but it's probably not appropriate for us to have it.
Yeah, I should like to bring it up.
Yes, yes.
All right. Any other concerns, questions with commissioners? I have a question concerning February 13 meeting. Do we have a full docket? What are we, are we looking at? Do you have any idea what we're looking at for February?
I do not. Actually, okay, so looking ahead, the calendars for February and March, I will be at a conference March 14th and will not be available. I'd very much like to be at the inclusion of the regularly scheduled meeting. So one thought is to reschedule February's meeting to February 27th. We may have a fairly large project ready to go for February 27th, but at this time, I do not have any project on the docket, so to speak, for February 13th.
Okay. What would be required for us to do that? Just, that it just could be noticed in the, in the paper and then you'll, that we're not going to have the meeting on the 13th and moving to the second schedule?
As we, you know, make sure, confirm this is the case, I will be in touch with you and let's move forward and work through, if there's going to be a rescheduling or a special meeting, potential for those options. But I need to confirm first, we don't have any items that need to go off February 13th. I don't believe we do.
Okay.
But I need to confirm that.
I do have kind of a scheduling home plate that day would be one reason I'm interested. All right, so moving on. Plan the staff?
Oh, yeah, God. Sorry, I'm a little shell shocked and I don't have much to report for, at this point. There is a lot going on. I don't know where to start, but the staff's working really hard, we're trying to keep things moving forward. The subdivision review committee is a big topic. As I said earlier, we took out several parcel maps and tentative subdivision maps that are backed up, even with our consultants. There's stuff we need to do in-house, and we don't, we're working as hard as we can. But that is a very important issue, is getting the subdivision review committee back on track and involved in the beginning of the process. Just working a lot.
Yes.
Just to confirm, there's no January 23 meeting? There's no second meeting this month?
No, that would have had to been noticed so that we know January 23rd. And someday I will come back with the files, so we get those cleaned up and not have that second meeting in the month that we have to consider each...
So as of right now, the next potential meeting is the 13th. If you're looking to push it to the 20th of July, if you can.
If we can, then we wouldn't need to have the meeting in early March and, or February 13th, so that would be the ideal, having a meeting for the race down, possibly. I mean, for my situation, it would, with the chairs, and that's how it works.
From my schedule, I could do either day. All right, anything else?
No, nothing else.
All right, then we will adjourn. We can wait and make it to 10 o'clock.